I'd like to call the December 5th, 2020 meeting of the Berners Township Planning Board's Board of Police Rising.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
In accordance with the requirements of the open public meetings law of 1975, notice of this meeting to the planning board of the township of Berners was posted on the bulletin board in the reception hall of the municipal building, Collier Lane, Baskin Ridge, New Jersey, was sent to the Bernersville News, Whippany, New Jersey, and to the Courier News, Bridgewater, New Jersey, on January 18th, 2023, and was electronically mailed to all those people who had requested individual notice. The following procedure has been adopted by the Berners Township Planning Board. There will be no new cases heard after 10:00 p.m., and no new witnesses or testimony will be heard after 10:30 p.m. May I have a roll call, Mr. Keeper, please?
Certainly. Chairwoman Cadice?
Here.
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Crane?
Here.
Mr. Demersian?
Here.
Mr. Yorio?
Here.
Mr. Ladisinski has advised me that he is ill and unable to attend. Ms. Manduk?
Here.
Ms. Master Angelo?
Here.
Mr. Seville?
Here.
Mr. Cuzzo?
Here.
Mr. Banish?
Here.
Mr. Drill?
Here.
Mr. Good?
Here.
Mr. Slade?
Here.
And for the record, Ms. Keeper is present. Madam Chair, you have a quorum you may begin.
Thank you. I'd like to have a motion to excuse Mr. Ladisinski, please.
I'll move.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. We have our October 3rd, 2023 minutes. Ms. Manduk is not eligible to vote. Everybody else is. May I have a motion to approve the minutes as drafted?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Crane, second?
Second.
Second by Committee Member Bauman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. The next item is Resolution 23-07, Award of Change Order Number One, 2023 Professional Services Contract for Planning Board Planner. It was in your packet. Are there any questions? Otherwise, I'll take a resolution to approve.
A motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Committee Member Bauman?
Yes.
Mr. Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Demersian?
Yes.
Mr. Yorio?
Yes.
Ms. Manduk?
Yes.
Ms. Master Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Cuzzo?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is the public hearing of the 2023 master plan. Way it will be handled is our planner, Mr. Banish, will give a summary of the changes in the plan and a summary of the plan, because we've had many, many public work sessions leading up to this. And then I will open up the meeting for public comment on the master plan. Mr. Banish, please.
So I'm going to swear him in. This is a hearing, so he's going to be sworn in. The public will also get to ask him questions in addition to comments. Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give in this matter of the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I swear. Thank you.
As for the record, who are you?
David Banish, licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, board planner for the Berners Township Planning Board.
Go ahead, Mr. Crane.
Thank you very much. Madam Chairwoman, there are changes in the master plan, are too numerous to mention. I'm going to give just a very general overview.
That's appropriate.
And I would like to remind the public that the planning board now has conducted two years of open session discussion and review work of the master plan up until this point.
Thank you.
Prior to publishing the document in accordance with the law and it being available for public inspection, at least 10 days prior to this public hearing, which I think should be noted as well.
Yeah, I actually agree with that.
Right.
That I reviewed the notices and the affidavit of publication of the notices, and in my opinion, they're in order.
Thank you. So the master plan is essentially comprised of 12 discrete elements, master plan elements that are all authorized under the municipal land use law. Chapter one is the goals and objectives. The planning board reviewed and refined the master plan goals and objectives with no major departures with respect to land use policy or any master planning policy in Berners Township. The land use plan did acknowledge some changes that have occurred since the last master plan, mostly having to do with the municipality having to address its constitutional affordable housing obligation for the state of New Jersey. So those zoning changes that were made, particularly with Dewey Meadow and Mountain View, are acknowledged and recognized, and that also caused a revision in the build-out, which went up considerably. And that is the result of those zoning changes. So the 2010 master plan had a residential dwelling unit, build-out capacity of 255 units. In 2023, that number is 719 units, but it is, it should be noted, that that increase in build-out between 2010 and 2023 is attributed to affordable housing, inclusionary zoning, the two sites that I just mentioned. And as of 2010, the municipality was entirely unaware of the fact of what its number would be to address the third round obligation, which was ultimately determined circa 2015. The municipality addressed it in the 2018 Housing Plan Element and Fair Share Plan, which is one of the chapters in this master plan, and it identifies the municipal affordable housing obligation. The non-residential floor area was reduced as a result of particularly the change at Mountain View Boulevard to accommodate residential housing. And the multifamily district section of the land use plan were updated to recognize and acknowledge those two changes. The land use plan element includes a new element called the Climate Change Hazard Vulnerability Assessment, and that's included on page 55. And that is part and parcel to a climate sub-plan element to the master plan, which was authorized in the municipal land use law, I think, two years ago. The planning board has already addressed the requirements for those sub-plan elements. Basically, it is to address smart growth, storm resiliency, environmental sustainability, things of the like, things like that. Chapter three, the demographics and housing plan element, has been updated to reflect the most recently adopted U.S. Census data. As I mentioned a moment ago, chapter four, the Housing Plan Element and Fair Share Plan, was actually adopted in 2018, and because it is a court-approved document and settlement agreements flow from that document, and there is no additional affordable housing obligation to address, that element was not disturbed as part of this master plan update process, and it remains in its, in the same form as it was adopted in 2018. The circulation plan element was also, the planning board reviewed and assessed traffic volumes associated with this unanticipated new residential growth that came with the affordable housing obligation. The board also refined a series of circulation recommendations. Interestingly, in terms of traffic generation, the board found that the changes in land use at Dewey Meadow and on Mountain View Boulevard actually resulted in fewer trips, less traffic within the community than would have resulted under the existing development at Dewey Meadow and the approved office development on Mountain View Boulevard. The suggested roadway improvements that the planning board identified in part flow from the 2019 periodic reexamination report, in part from what the board knows about the circulation system here in town, and some recommendations from the township engineer. There are no major changes, no drastic recommendations with regard to changing the character and the function of any of the roadways in the township. However, there are a few troublesome intersections where traffic could possibly be improved. Those are identified and highlighted, and there are also recommendations for circulation improvements such as bikeways, which I think are thoughtful additions to the circulation plan element. With the Community Facilities Plan Element, chapter five, the planning board recognized the stable levels of municipal personnel and also the reductions, substantial reductions in municipal personnel between 2008, 2021. And the board reviewed and updated the catalog of community facilities that are provided for the residents of Berners Township, including municipal services, the emergency services, police, schools. With respect to schools, enrollment trends were noted, particularly reductions in enrollment, services such as the library, and the board also prepared an updated inventory of township-owned and county-owned land. Chapter seven, the Parks and Recreation Plan, the planning board prepared an updated inventory, inventory of parks and recreation sites and facilities, and also updated the parks and rec services that are available to Berners Township. With respect to the Conservation Plan Element, chapter eight of the master plan, the planning board updated conservation plan policies with emphasis on maintaining a healthy environment and also acknowledging and recognizing the need to protect scenic elements of the environment. An updated inventory of open space and conservation areas was also prepared by the planning board, and those areas now total 3,235 acres of land. Chapter nine, the Utility Services Plan Element, there, I believe the board found the overarching objective is to maintain adequate levels of services that the residents have come to expect, with no expansion of growth-inducing infrastructure that would have the effect of altering community character in the long run. Chapter 10 is a Historic Preservation Plan Element. There, the planning board acknowledged the need to protect community heritage. There is an element authorized in the municipal land use law, chapter 11, the relationship to other plans. There, the board found through inventorying, the zoning in adjoining municipalities, that Berners Township zoning is generally compatible with the zoning of its adjoining municipal neighbors. And chapter 12, a Green Buildings and Environmental Sustainability Plan Element, was also updated, and the board recognized some of the achievements at the municipal level with respect to green plan strategies. And with that, Madam Chairman, those comments conclude my brief overview of the master plan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Banish. At this point, I will open up the public hearing for questions of Mr. Banish of what he has just talked about. If you have public comment, please reserve that until the public comments section.
Can I make a question?
Yes, go ahead.
So in the beginning, I just want to clarify for the record, you mentioned the build-out was 255 for 2010.
Yep.
And 2023, 719, but that's projected, correct? Because Mountain View has not been?
That's right.
Okay. I just want to make that clear, that it's not current.
That is correct.
Okay.
And also, I just want to add that the questions of Mr. Banish can not only be about what he testified to, but they can ask questions, because this master plan's been on file for 10 days. They can ask any questions.
First time I've done this hearing.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So I'm now going to open it up for questions of Mr. Banish's testimony, as well as any questions of the plan that has been part of the public record.
But you're still holding your comments?
Yeah, comments, please, until the end. I'll open it up for questions of Mr. Banish, please. Mr. Allen?
I'm Bill Allen, 44 Holmes Brook Road. By the way, it's been a long time since I've been up here.
It has been, Mr. Allen.
I'm here to talk about the quarry, and I have some comments later, but I have a question. Is there any information that you have seen in preparing your plan about the quality of the water in the Quarry Lake right now?
No, I have not. On the other hand, I've never searched that either. I understand that's under DEP's jurisdiction as an area under a memorandum of understanding with DEP.
Okay, but you don't know of any data that's been collected here?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I'll be back.
I know, Mr. Allen. Are there any other questions of Mr. Banish?
Just really quickly. Hi. Anna McCarthy, 38, Kenan Way. A quick question for you. It's 293-plus-word document. Is there some area in the document that summarizes the proposed future development or consideration of future development?
Not in a summary fashion, but I think you'll find the most useful information about that in the land use plan. The town really is approaching build-out, and what the land use plan provides is a description of the various residential zoning districts in the municipality, as well as the non-residential zoning districts, including the public purpose zones, the commercial districts, and the office employment districts. There, in the land use plan, you'll find a description of each of those land use categories, but what you'll find, that there are no departures from prior master plans.
From the 2019?
That's right, in 2010.
2010.
And there is no proposed change in zoning, or changes of use in zoning or intensity. The only changes that have been made really were for the municipality to address the constitutional affordable housing obligation assigned by the state.
Okay.
And the land use plan does acknowledge those two zoning changes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. McCarthy. Are there any other questions of Mr. Banish? Please state your name and address, please.
Jeff McBride, 77 Alder Lane in Baskin Ridge.
Please, go ahead.
Hoping it's appropriate, just was curious, as the plan was being put together, did you guys take a look at the New Jersey State Planning Commission Office of Planning Advocacies, Distribution, Warehousing, and Goods Movement Guidelines by any chance?
Did not.
Hmm.
I'm aware of them. They tend, they look to me like a roadmap for how to zone for warehousing. Insofar as I'm aware, there's no desire from a policy orientation to move in that direction in Berners Township.
So reading the master plan, I read it twice, I didn't see any reference to distribution, logistics, or warehousing.
I believe that the master plan is silent on that.
In light of what's going on with 150 Allen Road and 106 and 110, is it appropriate for us to consider putting in some language around what we would desire around warehouses?
Well, I'd have to defer to the board as to what its preference may be with respect to that particular issue.
So question, I guess, to the board?
Would any board members like to talk about that?
Is that something we should be talking about now, or is that?
I would think that's for his presentation of his comments.
Okay.
This is questions for this witness. So when you get up, you're going to say you believe that the master plan should say something about that, obviously.
Then we'll proceed from there.
And then the board will respond to that.
It's procedural in nature.
Yeah.
Alrighty, thank you.
Yeah, board, I didn't mean to put you on the spot with that.
I just wanted to make sure procedures followed.
Right. So please forgive me.
Are there any other questions of Mr. Banish? Seeing none, I'll close. Oh, please come up and state your name and address.
Yes, Jeff Petrasillo, 40 Briar Lane.
Let again slower.
Oh, sorry, Jeffrey Petrasillo, 40 Briar Lane.
Can you spell your last name?
Yep, P as in Peter, E T as in Tom, R as in Robert, O S as in Sam, I L L O. And I'm not sure if this is exactly the right time, first time coming to one of these.
If you could speak more.
Oh, sorry, is there anything in the plan about eco-housing, thinking about the affordable housing obligations that you mentioned earlier?
Eco-housing?
Eco-housing. E-C-H-O, I think it's elderly.
Echo.
Oh, echo, sorry, not eco, echo, echo.
Elder care housing opportunities.
Yes, sir.
We should, just for the benefit of anyone who may not know what that is, those are kind of small modular homes, and they are part of an affordable housing strategy for which a municipality can get rehabilitation credit as part of addressing its affordable housing obligation. Under COA's rules, an echo unit, an elder care housing opportunity unit is purchased by the municipality, it is installed in someone's yard, like in the rear yard or side yard of a single-family residential dwelling to house an elderly family member.
Kind of, but it's restricted to elderly.
Yep.
Is it restricted to elderly relative?
Yes.
Yes.
So it's not an ADU or a two-family residence?
That's right. It's not an accessory dwelling unit, it's a portable dwelling unit.
Sorry.
And it is only used on-site for as long as it is needed, and once it is no longer needed, in the echo program, it gets, it is supposed to be moved to another single-family dwelling somewhere else in the municipality that needs that type of housing for an elderly family member.
Oh.
So that's an echo unit. And no, the master plan does not address or make any recommendations with respect to echo.
Very clear. Thank you. Next question, is there any mention about easements in the plan, specifically in the maps? I noticed there was no easement. None of the town easements were mapped out or called out, is that true?
Well, a lot of the open space, off the open spaces map.
What type of easement do you ask?
Yeah. So specifically, in the back of, inside of my property, there's an easement for wildlife. I guess when they developed my part of town.
So you mean the conservation easement?
Correct, yes, conservation easement.
So you want to know if there's any matter of conservation easements in the master plan? I mean, there's.
Thank you for the clarification.
There's.
Civil rights easements. Right.
You want to know about conservation?
Conservation easement specifically.
There are two that appear in the plan, and those are actually conservation rights. I'm not sure that they're actually easements. I think that's, those are, I stand corrected, those are two sites where the municipality owns conservation rights on sites.
Correct, yeah.
So the easements in particular are not mapped, inventoried or listed.
Okay, great, thank you.
Just the township open space.
Got it.
Parkland, obviously.
Right, yes, yep, I saw that.
All the land that's not available for development.
Okay, understood. And last question, is there anything in the plan about animal populations, specifically deer, or would that not be relevant to the master plan?
Could be relevant to the master plan. It's not addressed in the master plan. I think you're probably aware of municipal programs to manage.
Yes, yep.
Your population, but no, the master plan is silent on that.
Understood. All right, thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, Mr. Banish? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion, question portion for Mr. Banish. Next would be the public portion?
Yep, public comments, yep.
So now I'm going to reopen the meeting for public comments. Please again come up, you will be sworn in. State your name and address for the record again. So please, anybody, public comments, please come up. Okay, Mr. Allen, we're going to start you out?
Yep.
If nobody else wants to go first?
They want you to go first.
They want you to go first, Mr. Allen.
I'm glad I don't have to walk very far, because my legs are not working very well these days. Let's see, am I okay with, oh, sorry about that.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matter of the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
I know that you've already identified yourself with the questions, but can you identify yourself again with your address?
Okay, is, am I okay on this mic?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Mr. Allen.
The most interesting parcel.
Your name and address again.
Sorry about that. Bill Allen, 44 Holmes Brook Road.
Go ahead, Mr. Allen.
For 55 years. Okay, maybe longer than John Crane.
District, district says. Good district.
The most interesting piece of property in this town, in my opinion, is the quarry. And I'm a little disappointed that the master plan says, just leave the zoning as it is, two acres, large houses. I think there's a lot more potential for that property. Now, if I had known about the meeting where you were discussing those properties, I probably would have come, but I didn't know about it. So anyway, I'm going to come here and talk to you about a proposal that was developed in 2003. That's correct, 20 years ago. Now, a lot of things have changed on the property in 20 years, but a lot is the same. In 2003, we got for the first time detailed topography drawings about what the quarry would look like when mining was finished. Quarrying had been going on for decades before that, but we really didn't know what it was going to look like. Okay, there was something called a hearing on the rehabilitation plan, which certainly John Drill knows about, and David Sly, but some of.
I didn't have any gray hair back then, it was all black.
And we had hearings on that. I was a member of the public at the time, but we had hearings in this room for two Now, as part of that exercise, I made what I call a concept plan for the property. I used the GIS system here in town and the data that the quarry had provided, and developed a plan which involves a subdivision of the property into two parts. The land that's buildable for residences on the south would be retained in private ownership, but the lake and everything else would be sold to the town for $1, and the deal would be that the town would take over the management, maintenance of the property that they acquired, and they would share the cost of that with the homeowners association for the residential homes. Now, I put this plan on the table back in 2003, and it's been on the table a few times since that time, but it's never really been addressed in detail. It was just Bill Allen's plan. So I want to present it again here tonight, because the quarry, as you know, has been sold, and the guy who owns it is a developer, and I think maybe when interest rates decline and some economic changes occur, that you'll have a development proposal before you. And I'd like to, and he won't propose what I'm proposing, but I'd like you to have in your minds an alternative scenario for the development of this property. So I have a concept drawing that I made in 2003, which my.
May 2nd, 2004.
Okay, I actually did the work in 2003. Thank you, John. Right on the ball. And if you read the rest of that caption, it says, "I did revise it somewhat to reflect the imported fill that was brought in during the years 2006, 2008." The quarry has a lot of history, and most of you know that I talk too much, so I'm going to try to make this short. And Dave is going to pull up the chart that was made in 2003 with the data we received then.
Okay, so in the bottom right-hand corner, it says, "Plan originated by Bill Allen on May 2, 2004, and revised on May 12, 2009," correct?
That's it.
And also says more information on back of sheet, but there's no back of the sheet.
Right, right. This was actually prepared for a handout at Charter Day some years ago. Okay, now, Dave has just given me my first tutorial on using this thing. I'm not going to have to change any slides, so I'm just going to use the cursor. And the cursor is showing up there. All right. By the way, the first thing that.
Dave's going to be your assistant here for a couple minutes.
Okay. The first thing that occurs to me when I look at this chart is it looks like the Roadrunner cartoon character. Anyway, I always think of that when I look at the chart. Okay, some of you know right away what we're looking at, but forgive me if I just comment. The chart north is up, as it should be. The northern boundary is the railroad, and it runs over to the peak of the Roadrunner, and that pointed section on the right touches Pond Hill Road. The boundary on the west, the left side, is mostly Stonehouse Road, but there's also some houses up in the upper left. Okay. The most. Okay, the most prominent feature, when you look at this drawing, is what? The lake, the lake. That lake is estimated to grow to about forty acres. Big lake, bigger than any ones nearby. And it's deep, going to be deep. Of course, it's tapered, but it's going to be, it's not a little shallow lake, it's going to be a deep lake. Now, the elephant in the room, which I'll talk about right away, because you may be thinking about it, is when we brought in fill in the years two thousand and six to seven and eight, we found in eight, seven, in two thousand and eight, that some of the fill was contaminated. The contaminant, contaminants were not, in my opinion, serious contaminants, but they aren't, it wasn't material that you'd want to put on a school ground, for example. So the deal was that that land that's on the upper left corner, which is where the embankment was built, and is, is capped with two feet of shale, so that if you walk on it, or if you have a picnic on it, or if you sit on a park bench on it, you're not going to be contaminated. You wouldn't want to put a tot light there, and there's no permission to build a structure there. So the la, the land that's on the upper left is where the contaminated fill is isolated. And there were massive testing programs that went on from two thousand and eight, two thousand and eleven, that went on for years. And the experts all agreed that the contaminants that were in that embankment were not a hazard for the lake. That's important. The expert who testified, our expert, and also the applicant's expert, quarry's expert, they all agreed that we really shouldn't worry about water quality in the lake from that material. Now, these were projections, projections. And none of us really trust projection. But the lake is almost full now, I think. So if you want to know what the quality of the water in the lake is, go out and test it. We can do that before we take any other steps. We can actually determine what the quality of the water that's in that lake now is. No longer have to rely on projection. Okay. One of the important things about that lake is that it's self-contained. There's no stream running through it. It doesn't flush. So what you have to do if you're develop, sorry, developing that property, is keep bad stuff out of the lake. So any development on this property has to be very careful to prevent foreign materials from going into the lake. That was one of the problems with the plan that was submitted in, in twenty seventeen. They had access right down to the lake. The lake would have become, would have been, sorry, uh, is there water over here?
Yes.
How about it? On the cup or you want the pot?
No, we have the pot.
Sure.
Stuff would have, would have gone into that lake right away under that development pla, plant, and fortunately it was, it was pulled. Okay. So the lake is a prominent feature. It also has a huge potential benefit for the town. If the water quality is good, and again, I emphasize, we would have to verify that. You can put fish in that lake and fish on it. You can fish from the shore, you can fish from a boat. You can use all kinds of non-motorized craft in the lake, kayaks, canoes, rowboats, you name it. And over on the east side, you can have a bathing beach.
You can have what?
Now, on this diagram, the yellow is the bathing beach, and you fairly see a li, line going out to the left, that would be the roped area, and within that area, people could swim. This bathing beach would be managed and financed like Pleasant Valley Pool. Now, there was a time when Pleasant Valley Pool was overscribed. I don't know what the situation is today, but we're increasing the number of people in town. So this would be an alternative place for people to swim. The beach and a, and a part of the lake. I think, I, yeah, I already mentioned what you could do in the lake. Okay, let's move on. Down on the bottom of this drawing are townhouses. That's a slope that can be built on. I used Amherst Mews Townhouses as the model for this diagram. And I posted sixty-eight there. I always thought that that would be a bargaining point. You'd move up from there, because you could put more than that in there. And what I see around town today, they're much more dense than that. But anyway, we, I started here with sixty-eight townhouses. And I've already talked about the area where the, where the contaminated fill is on the upper left. Okay, if we're going to try to keep stuff out of the lake, the road system can help you. That gray line that starts down in the left out at the bottom, then goes up and then over, that's the main road. You would poke through the berm at that point on Stonehouse Road, because at that point, the elevation of Stonehouse Road is about the same as the elevation in the quarry. So you go through a relatively horizontal section, make a left turn, and then go down the slope, and then make a right turn, and go across near the south edge of the lake. The elevation of that road would be high enough to catch any overland flow from the houses that are built on the south slope. In other words, if you want debris from the residential area to not go into the lake, you're going to have to catch it somehow, because there will always be some debris, even though you ask the homeowners to not use pesticides, not use, uh, herbicides or, or fertilizer, or not change the oils in their car, there's, there's always going to be some debris from the residential section. So, and it'll, it'll be, become part of the overland flow. So the purpose of that road design, the road will be a little bit higher than the land just south of it, is to catch anything from going into the lake. And I didn't do a very good job of it, but those green swaths are bio, bio-retentionations. Okay. What have I forgot?
What's that other, uh, building there? You've got.
I'm sorry.
You've got sixty-nine dwelling, or sixty-eight dwelling units, but it looks like there's sixty-nine structures. What is that one building that sits in the south?
You've got sharp eyes. What do you call it when you have a, a, a community that's a clubhouse?
A clubhouse, yeah. Okay, thank you.
And if you look sharper, o, over on the bathing beach, I have a, have a, a, a boathouse and a, and a, and a place to get food, whatever the name is.
Concession state.
Concession state. So I put a lot of work into this. And I have no regrets. Because the town could do this. Now, what's the incentive? First of all, I'm going to assume that some members of the community would like something like this. I don't know. I have, I, I was about ready to market this when the word came out that the fill was contaminated. And you know that, at that period of two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, you wouldn't dare propose what I'm proposing, because the answer was, "Oh, you can't do that, you can't do that." I wouldn't let my kids swim there. But now that the lake is almost full, we can test it, and we can relieve any fears that people have about the quality of the water, if in fact it is good. And if it isn't good, I'll withdraw. I would, I withdraw my plan if the quality of, of the water is poor. But I, again, I'm resting on information from the consultants back in two thousand and three that it would not be a problem. Now, did I emphasize that if the town takes over the management and maintenance of the park property, and it relieves the homeowners association of any management responsibility, that that should be a great benefit to future homeowners? My experience, limited experience with homeowners association is they want to do as little as possible. And if it's, and it, in any major thing involves controversy. So they would be relieved totally of any decisions. Uh, okay. Uh, now, you may say, "What, what about the quarry owner? What did they think of this?" I know the Mahan family. I, 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 I know the principal who has bought the property. I met him back in twenty seventeen when they made a proposal that was shot down immediately. I am not dealing with them, I do not represent them. But they know my plan, because I've been talking about it for some time. They have never once criticized it. In other words, they could have right away said, "Ah, I can't do that," not practical. Never once have they said that. So I kind of think that the owner of the property would be willing to enter into a deal like this. And if they did, then all we have to do is convince, convince the community, and then the township committee, which will be difficult. Is that, is it going here on the township committee right now?
Yes.
Okay, you're the guy. You're the guy who won. Alright, congratulations. The township committee has not wanted to, take on projects like this in the recent past. Uh, but if the community wanted to do this, and if the clouds of, overhead of, of, if the fears of contaminated material were erased, then I think it would be time to launch a, a crusade to sell this. And, uh, I won't do that now, but I think there might be enough interest in the community to pursue this. Now, I know I've talked more than I wanted to, but I'll stop right here. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Yes, Mr. Grill has a couple of questions, Mr. Allen.
When you testified that there's no contamination under the lake, you said it was based on consultant reports from two thousand and three, correct?
And I also had a private conversation with Steve Soza.
Right. Okay, but from two thousand and three, before the memorandum of understanding was entered into between the quarry owner and the DEP, correct?
I'm sure, yeah.
So are you aware?
Oh, wait a minute, I, I, there's been a lot of legal stuff between the quarry and the owner, so I'm not sure that, what the answer to that is.
But put it this way, would it surprise you, because I'm going to end up asking Mr. Sly, who knows, would it surprise you if half of that lake has contaminated soil under it, that the contamination line goes halfway through the lake?
Okay, right, the, the embankment on the upper left is tapered, so the.
Through, under the water.
Sure, sure, sure.
Okay, because you said before that there's no contamination under that lake, right?
No, what I said was, or should have said, was that the water that people would swim or in, or fish in would not be contaminated.
How do you know that? What are you based on?
Okay, that was the, that was the testimony from the two consultants that the town engaged, and also from the applicant, from the quarry's consultant.
Okay, but like, just like you said before, no one would know for a fact until and unless the water was tested, correct?
Okay, but the lake's almost full now, I think.
But you wouldn't know until and unless the water was tested, correct?
Oh, yeah, that's, I, I, I would absolutely insist that before the town did anything serious about my proposal, that that water be tested.
So just, if you're, I assume you're asking the planning board to somehow include this in the master plan or not? Because if you are, how could you ask the planning board to include it before knowing that the water's been tested and in fact the water's not contaminated?
That's why I asked Mr. Banish the question. Uh, when the planning board was reviewing the situation back in eight, nine, ten, eleven, the proposal was that testing be done continuously. And I don't know where that proposal went, but I don't think that's been done.
Correct, right. So how could you ask the planning board tonight to add this into the master plan without knowing for a fact that the water is not contaminated for swimming? Because the proposal has swimming in the lake, correct?
Yeah.
So how do you?
Okay, I, I'm presenting this for your information. I would have liked to have had David answer my question that, yes, he does know about.
Right, but he doesn't know.
Right, but, and, and so I accept that answer. That's, that's where we are now.
This is just for information.
For information.
It's not, you're not asking the planning board to include this in the two thousand twenty-three master plan, is that correct?
I guess yes, yeah.
Okay.
That's all I wanted to know.
Okay, I, I guess, I'm planting a seed, so that when the development comes.
Fair enough.
Comes to the planning board, where it will come eventually, you'll know, "Oh, geez, that guy, he had another idea," right? Now, I have a feeling that the applicant would be willing to entertain this fairly quickly. Again, I'm not talking to him now, but I know him. And he's known about this proposal for a long time and never poo-pooed it.
Okay.
Okay, I.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or, uh, from Mr. Allen? Okay, thank you, Mr. Allen.
I'm going to give Cindy a copy of what I should have been reading but wasn't.
Okay.
And I will lend to give her a digital copy. And there's a whole lot of information about this proposal on my website, and I'll include that in the memo.
Thank you very much for making the presentation, Mr. Allen.
Thank you.
Does anybody know how long I talked?
I don't know.
Just right.
Don't worry about it.
I was worried, I was hoping it'd be less than ten minutes, but I don't know.
Okay, anybody else would like to come up, please, for public comment? Please come up. Go ahead, come on up. You're going to have to swear in and give your name and address, okay? Just swear then.
Yeah.
Just swear then, yeah.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole thing is not about the truth?
I do.
And again, can you state your name and spell your last name once more?
Sure, it's, uh, Jeff McBride, M.C., capital B-R-I-D-E, seventy-seven Alder Lane in Basking Ridge.
Mr. McBride, you'll have to speak into the microphone.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. McBride.
Thank you, thank you. So I guess, uh, a first question for you folks, um, as you've worked on the master plan, has there been any consideration to include clarification on what a warehouse, or distribution, or logistics center is in the master plan? I, I scanned it, I didn't, I didn't catch it.
I would just say, I don't recall that we had any discussions regarding warehousing, to my, the best of my recollection.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Mr. Demers.
Because we, we basically reviewed the twenty-ten master plan, and we edited, edited, edited that version, um, with guidance from, uh, Mr. Banish. And so, since warehousing was never mentioned previously, uh, it wasn't considered.
So back in, I think, early twenty-twenty-two, an applicant came to develop, redevelop one-fifty Allen Road. So it's not like it didn't happen two months ago.
No, I understand, but.
Right, that application was to the Board of Adjustments.
Understand.
No, 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 it's.
Has approached the planning board with it during.
No, the only thing I would say is that we started this, this master plan review, I think in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen? So it was prior to that.
No, I understand, I understand, but it's not done yet.
No, it's a, it's an excellent point, I'm glad you. I'm glad you brought it up.
It's not done yet. So, it's interesting because I've been, I referenced this earlier about the New Jersey State Planning Commission advocacy report, giving guidance on what communities should consider about warehousing. And we know we have an active pursuit at 150 with Signature Acquisition, who also, by the way, owns 106 and 110. So, there could be possibly 800,000 square feet available. I could be off a wee bit, but it could be a large project, and it needs to be redeveloped because it's vacant. So, I understand that we need, we need to put a business in there. My question is, what type of business? So, the state came out, and in fact, we have a member acknowledged in this report from county and local government representatives. There's Bruce Harris from Chatham Borough, and there's also Ms. Robinson from our county, Somerset County. So, she participated in this report. So, have you folks seen this at all? Have you looked at it?
Sir, sir, can I ask a question? That's just a recent publication.
So, it's September of 2022. Soon to be, I'm told, revised and updated because there's been a lot of push within the state around warehousing. It's not that...
Who's the, the author or who's the...
So, I can give you a copy and...
Can you give me a copy?
Oh, absolutely.
We can send it to you electronic. Wait. Oh, this is the New Jersey State Planning Commission?
Yes.
Or the planning advocacy? This is their policy adopted September 7, 2022.
Correct. So, I do, ooh, microphone, I do understand that in the master plan, that we do not fall under the protected area of the Highlands Coalition. We're in the planning area.
Right.
So, I guess my, my ask is, before this master plan is signed, for the board, you folks, to consider taking a look at this guidance and incorporating some of those concepts into the master plan, because today we have light manufacturing, which is kind of broad, it's a broad definition. So, there's a lot of wiggle room in there. So, I guess I'm asking, let's try, because I, I understand, maybe you guys can answer this question, is there any, do we have an ordinance in Bernard's Preventing Warehousing today?
Mr. Banish? Yeah, Mr. Banish?
Well, what I would say about that is that any use that is not specifically enumerated as a permitted use is a prohibited use, and that use is not enumerated as a permitted use.
So, help me, help me understand that. So, it's not mentioned, so it's not allowed?
Not permitted, that's right.
Okay.
So, it would be a variance situation?
Warehouse application, yes, it would be.
What type of variance?
Use variance.
Oh, use variance.
Just clarifying for the record.
Right.
Thank you.
And we have no jurisdiction over use variances on the planning board, Mr. McBride. Use variances must go to the zoning board of adjustment.
Yep, no, I'm aware of those guys. Okay. I think that's it for now, for me, so thank you.
I can add that back.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, Mr. McBride. Are there any other people who'd like to speak? Come on up. Please identify yourself and be sworn in.
I'll have to lower this quite a bit. That's why I'll have to lower it. Donna Mascia, M.A.S.C.I.A., 77...
Right hand?
The other right.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony that you're going to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole thing about the truth?
I do.
Can you please provide your address?
77 Alder Lane, Basking Ridge.
Go ahead, please.
Don't tell anybody. Okay, I'm still, and, and again, I'm not sure if this is the appropriate place, so excuse me if it's not, you just please dismiss me. Yes, just dismiss me if this is not the appropriate place for this. Just carrying on with the fact that there, the master plan seems to be silent on things related to warehousing, distribution centers, fulfillment centers, and with one exception and a footnote, manufacturing is part of the definition of office employment districts. Is there, is there any opportunity to expand on those points in the master plan?
Got a question.
To specifically, to, I'm not sure who to address it to, so again, I'm sorry, but has it been considered, any of those three types of things, four types of things, or defining manufacturing in the office employment district much more clearly? It's not really defined in the master plan at all, and maybe that's not the place for it.
Yeah, definitions are in the zoning ordinance.
zoning ordinance, right.
Okay.
But you just heard that it's a prohibited use unless it's specifically permitted.
Warehouse, warehouse is what I heard, but there's also other types of things that could be built on, I believe, office and employment districts that might be considered large, great square footage types of properties, like what's being proposed at 150 Allen Road, and I'm trying to see if there's an appetite for thwarting that in the future with this town. And if that's, this is not the place to address it.
You're asking the board if they have an appetite for putting in some sort of something in the master plan indicating that something that you've got to articulate a little better would not be permitted. Is that what I'm...
Either by virtue of it being silent, we know that it's not permitted, or clarifying definitions. And maybe where I'm going is that the definition of manufacturing, as it appears in the ordinances, needs to be redefined in my mind, and that may not be the place for it here.
You're asking the planning board to make a recommendation in the master plan that the definition in the zoning ordinance be clarified.
Is that appropriate? I don't know. Is that, is that, I don't know how it works, so...
The master plan is a policy document, and it, it goals, long-term goals for the community, but also it can have, it can, can have recommendations. Now, the governing body doesn't have to follow the recommendations, but it can have recommendations. So, as I understand it, you're asking the planning board to make a recommendation that definitions either be tightened up or clarified about certain things, which I'm still not exactly...
Okay, so specifically, I would like to ask for a recommendation be made for the, for the definition of light manufacturing as it appears in zoning ordinances today to be clarified and clear.
By ordinance.
By ordinance?
That the, that the master plan recommend...
Right.
The ordinance definition of light manufacturing be clarified.
Right.
In which way? Clarify...
Define it more clearly. Right now, it's a very, very broad definition. Can we tighten that up and define it more clearly? And I would have to rely on people with industry expertise to help define that.
Are there any comments for board members?
Do you have a specific, I feel like you have a specific idea in mind. Can you articulate that?
This stems from the project that's going on at 150 Allen Road.
No, I understand that, but like if you wanted something defined, are you saying, because sometimes when you define something, you, you, yes, you overly complicate it because then you're defining it and you might not foresee things that might fit under that in the future. Do you see what I'm saying? So, you want a definition of more specifics, correct, of light manufacturing?
Yes.
Such as?
Good point. Haven't thought it through quite exactly. I guess I want it to be something that precludes it, precludes light manufacturing from being of, being, let's see how to put this...
You see how hard it is?
From, yes, I do. And I would rely on people with some expertise to help do that and welcome dialogue about it.
You're just trying to get inside of your head.
And I, yeah, and again, I can only, what I can tell you is it stems from the project at 150 Allen Road, and what the developer there is describing as light manufacturing seems to be quite contradictory to the plans that have been presented to the zoning board, and that raises a grave concern in my mind, and I think the minds of literally hundreds of other people who have been very actively concerned and articulating their concern about that. So, that's, that's what concerns me about the way the ordinance is written today, is that there's somebody in front of this community today that's really trying to, you know, dress it up in a different way, and what seems to be much more than light manufacturing as it is broadly defined in today's ordinance.
I, I was suggesting you think a little bit more about it, bring it to the township committee. Most ordinances in zoning is based from township committee, people that get voted on.
Okay, that's helpful to understand.
And I think in the future, this will probably come up because of what the gentleman just mentioned, there's state plans on model ordinances. This is something new that's hitting most of the states. I think the best place is the township committee to look at that. We have a planner here that's been here 25 years, is an expert. Very good.
There would be most direct way to do this.
Okay, so I'm just going to repeat that.
I don't think it's the master plan.
Okay, then let me repeat that to make sure I'm clear. If somebody in this community is interested in advocating for either a new ordinance or a change in an ordinance, the place to take that up is the township committee.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct. Then they can decide if, they agree, disagree, if they agree, they can decide if they want to tell the planner to address something, or they may want to refer to the planning board. But they're the people that adopt the ordinances. Planning board's the people that keep the guidance document.
Okay, and then the zoning board implements them?
No, the planning board implements ordinances that, for permitted uses, and the board of adjustment hears applications for non-permitted uses. So, the board of adjustment only deals with applications.
Okay, very good.
They are almost totally a quasi-judicial board. The planning board wears two hats. They wear a legislative hat and a quasi-judicial hat.
Okay.
The legislative hat is master planning, what they're doing now. The quasi-judicial hat is when they have an application for a permitted use.
Got it, permitted use, got it. Very clear. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for taking the time to come. Come on up. Take you know the drill, state your name, address, and we will swear you in.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Lily Wong. I live at 178 Liberty Corner Road, Bar Hills, New Jersey, but technically in Bernard's Township.
Do you have your right hand?
Oh, I have. Shall I do it again?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole thing about the truth?
Absolutely, yes, thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Wong.
Sure, I would love to make two comments, and I hope it doesn't seem like I'm rehashing what the earlier two comments were. I personally attended a number of the zoning board of adjustment meetings regarding 150 Allen Road, and there was a lot of opposition by fellow residents because there was this semblance of a warehouse with the 24 loading docks. And many of our fellow residents commented on concerns about traffic and air pollution and road safety. And many towns across New Jersey are facing this growing warehousing where they have very little vacancy, and this is a tremendous business opportunity for some towns. And I wanted to point out, it could be the same report that Jeff mentioned, which is from the State Planning Commission on warehouse sitting guidance. And in there, there's a section on municipal considerations. This is the guidance given to towns about how they should think about warehousing, and one of the first things that they mention is update the master plan and the zoning first. That's number one in their recommendation. So, there are things that we might want to consider. For instance, do we want to more clearly define what is light manufacturing versus a warehouse? We can use different criteria for defining what is one versus the other, like number of loading docks or square footage, but I would urge the planning board to consider updating the master plan to have more explicit, explicit language on not desiring warehousing in our township. So, that's my first comment. And the second is unrelated to warehousing, and that is on page 49 of the master plan, which talks about electric vehicle charging and how the town currently has six charging, charging stations, and there is...
Six locations.
Six locations. But it makes an assumption that the market will take care of future charging stations, and there's not, it gives the impression that there's no need to further make plans for more charging stations, public charging stations in our township. And when I've been speaking to residents the last few months, many people who live in townhouses do not have the ability to install a home charging unit. And so, there is a need to put more charging units, public charging stations, in our township and for you to consider it. This is especially timely because much of the grants that are available, which is free funds for our township, are around EV charging stations. So, my suggestion is maybe to consider putting language that, that encourage us to have more charging stations in our township.
Are you aware that there is an ordinance, though, that, right, Mr. Schley?
State law.
State law, excuse me. Can you just...
Well, that's for new, that's for new development.
But not for existing.
He's asking for existing development.
But, you know, for the townhouses that are coming in at Mountain View, are they falling under that or are they grandfathered?
I, I don't recall if they're grandfathered or not. I think they were approved before that law was enacted.
I think they were, they did approve before the law.
Correct.
Okay.
They had preliminary approval beforehand, so I believe they're grandfathered, but I believe her...
No, I understand, yeah. No, it's, it's a valid concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wong. Are there comments? Come, come, have to restate your name and everything.
Yes, yep. Jeff Petrosillo, 40 Briar Lane, Basking Ridge.
More slowly, the thing gets slow.
Yep, P.E.T.R.O.S.I.L.L.O.
Okay, and what's the first name again?
Jeff, Jeffrey, J.F.F.R.E.Y.
Do you have your right hand?
Yes, sir. Got it.
You swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole thing about the truth?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Okay, so apologies, I didn't attend the, the public working sessions. I didn't, wasn't aware of those, I just kind of found this in the newspaper 10 days ago. So, I have eight points, run through them quickly, don't want to waste everyone's time. The first one, to the deer comment earlier, I'd love to have the master plan include some verbiage about the deer population. I think talking to the deer management committee, right now, we have about 40 deer per mile, per square mile, down from 120, I guess, 10 years ago, so huge improvement there, but it's still way, 800% higher than the deer population in a native habitat. In the native habitat, there's about five deer per square mile versus the 40 that we have in town today. Deer spread disease, there's scientific studies showing that a reduction in the deer herd reduces Lyme disease, Babiose, ASG, I think is the other one, where if you get bit by the tick, you can't eat meat. It's horrible, my cousin has it. So, I'd just like to recommend that we put a, put a more formal recommendation in the master plan about the deer population and about limiting the size of the herd.
Okay, so...
If that's possible. He's, just because he said it was possible, I don't...
Dave, I looked when he asked that question before. I'm not so sure that's a land use issue. I don't know if that, I mean, look, he put whatever he wanted in the master plan, but I'm not so sure that that fits in. NJSA 4055 D-28, that deals with what the planning board may prepare, and after a public hearing adopt or amend the master plan to guide the use of lands in a manner that protects public health and safety and promotes general welfare. The master plan shall generally comprise a report or a statement and land use and development proposals, presenting at least the following elements, one and two, which is statement of objectives in the land use plan element, and where appropriate, three, three through 17. So, I'm looking for something along the environmental...
Well, I could see it from the, the land use perspective, right? If you're talking about...
28 F3.
F3?
If you're talking about land use...
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Sir, certainly where there's a deer committee?
Yes, sir, yep, yeah, I've spoken with them.
Environmental sustainability under the land use plan element. So, you think it could, could be in there?
I think it could, yeah, I think it could be as an environmental sustainability policy.
But he's not looking to sustain it. He's looking to kill it.
Well, just, I mean, we should still have some, not completely, yeah, to reduce. To sustain natural levels.
I would argue the point, I think what he's trying to say is toward a more sustainable environment.
Correct.
Ah, okay.
For both humans and, and deer.
Okay, all right.
Are you quoting a study? Are you a biologist? Or I'm just...
I, I can provide the studies after. I don't have the exact source on me right now, but there are studies where, on some islands off of Massachusetts, where they reduced the deer herd and it eliminated the tick population completely. Deer are the, tick goes... Deer are the, ticks go through a four life cycle and the third life cycle, okay.
What's the name of the study?
I'll have to provide it to you after, I'm sorry. But basically, ticks need a deer, a big mammal to feed on in order to reproduce, and if they don't have that, they can't reproduce. So they'll be on mice, chipmunks for their first two or three stages, but when they get time to reproduce, they can if they don't have a mammal, a big mammal like a deer. So that's where eliminating the deer population reduces the tick population. There's a direct correlation there. Talking to the Deer Management Committee, it sounds like they're very sparse on resources. It would cost five thousand dollars a year to do an aerial drone study of the town to track that number of deer per acre, or number of deer per square mile. And it seems like they just don't have the funds to do that. So I think including this in the master plan could help with future supportive of that committed. Second point-
So can I just chime in with regards to the Deer Management Committee? Does anyone, is anyone here familiar with it, or what they do, or what the status of that committee is? Because, just as, and I appreciate your comment, someone myself who suffers from Lyme disease, and I've had it, I'm embarrassed, I'm embarrassed to admit, probably six or seven times. But I do a lot of yard work, I get bit by ticks. I'm actually going for blood work in the morning for my latest tissue, so I appreciate your concern. Not that I want to kill deer-
Right.
-or bears or anything, I think today the first day of buck season with shotgun, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe bear, I heard.
I thought I heard a shotgun in my neighborhood.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, so, that aside, the little I know about the Deer Committee, it's police officers who are on the committee, and they go out and-
No, there are members of the public-
All right, so maybe there are members of the public, the way it was explained to me. But maybe they can do more recruiting instead of spending money on-
Well, I think the aerial study-
Maybe that's just an issue, something to bring up that maybe Mr. Baumann can take back to the Township Committee.
I certainly will.
Okay, yeah, talking to the committee, it sounded like they're not interested in calling the herd any further. It seems like, they feel like we found a good balance at thirty to forty. It's reduced car accidents, that was the number-one goal. Car accidents have been reduced over ninety percent with deer since the committee was enacted, and since they've reduced the herd from over a hundred down to forty. But now I'm asking, can we reduce it from forty down to five to get rid of Lyme disease and ticks?
Sir, Sarah, I think this is a township.
Okay, sorry.
To be honest with you, you're gonna get more, more impact talking directly to people that get voted for.
Understood.
But it's a good point, we're discussing the master plan, and we, you know, thank you for that comment.
Yep, you're welcome. Second question, talk about the utilization of renewable resources, or renewable energy sources in the master plan. Is there any recommendations about potentially, and this might not be the right place, but potentially installing a pyrolysis machine, a pyrolysis plant, which would basically take all of the wood chips in town, it would turn into energy, biochar, it would create carbon credits, so it could be a cash flow for the town, an energy source for the town, and also put to use all of the wood chips that we have.
Wouldn't that lead to the Township Committee also?
Okay, but so that's not a right, so you wouldn't, you don't give specific recommendations within this plan?
No.
Understood, okay.
Sir, just aware that the landfill also chips them.
Right, but they-
Landfill has a chipping station.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I know, but it's-
Correct.
So I'd actually recommend you start with the Environmental Commission.
Yeah.
That's probably, that suggestion would start with the Environmental Commission, and then find its way to the Township Committee as an initiative if it were vetted and accepted by, you know, the EC.
Understood.
To throw my two cents in regarding wood chips.
They're a great source of ticks.
We've heard of that.
Pill Hill, I frequent there often, doing my yard work.
Yes.
I get a truckload of brush to the township.
Right.
So the township does have their own mulcher.
Right, yes.
They shred it, and they make mulch. And then you're, anyone in Kentown, you can bring as much brush to the township as you would like, and they will mulch it, and then you get as much free mulch as you would like.
Right.
So there is a sustainability aspect.
Yep.
And it's my understanding that the township used to send the mulch, the brush out, and have it processed for a fee, and then maybe they bought the mulch back, so it would cost.
Got it.
But they were proactive in buying their own mulcher, and so-
Brilliant.
It's a, it's a win-win for the town.
Yeah, no, it's-
So free mulch.
Yep, yeah, I think that's-
Sustainable.
Like you're saying, that's halfway there.
I don't know that there's enough mulch left to burn.
I, I mean, I've-
Go to the Environmental Commission.
Okay, sorry.
You'll see a familiar face.
Okay, sounds good. Talk to you, John, all right, thanks, John. Let's see, skip over that one. So we talked about the town easements, I'd like to make a recommendation to add the town conservation easements to the maps, maybe map five-four, if that's a good one. But I think it should be somewhere in there.
How would you go about mapping all the conservation easements?
I'd start over in the engineering department to find out what they have as my way of an inventory in that respect.
Is there, do you know if there's some sort of inventory?
Well, they're showing all the tax maps and other digital maps. I mean, it would be huge to show, you couldn't show them on the kind of scale of maps that are in the master plan right now, I mean, they're just too small.
So approximately, I mean, well, many properties-
If the board wanted to do, how would you go about?
Right.
You mean for each property that has a conservation easement?
I mean for the entire town, right, just showing, I don't know, like a little green color for every single easement, because I think you would show, there'd be a lot of dots.
What's the benefit?
I think just the benefit for the town is to see the open spaces, so on the map five-four.
They're not technically open spaces.
They're not, but they're natural spaces, they're natural habitat that's being protected. They're essentially owned by the town, yeah, so the homeowner owns it, but that land is protected. I can't do anything, I can't touch the easement, it's-
It's not owned by the township.
Right.
It's an easement which restricts your use.
Right.
Conservation only.
Understood.
So I'm asking, what's the benefit of spending all the resources to map out all this stuff on some digital map, because it's just the only way you'd be able to use it. What's the benefit to the township to map that stuff out?
Well, I think at some point it should be done, it should all be digital, it'd be good for access.
Okay, but why, what's the, what's the purpose?
You're talking about on the master plan, too.
Correct, and the ma-
I mean, it is digitized.
But not the info.
I know.
What would you do with, I'm just-
I just think for the-
Find out what you're concerned.
Right, so the town is just, so the community is aware that these conservation easements exist, and that that is protected land for the town.
Are they on the tax maps?
Yes, yes.
Okay, they're on the tax maps.
Right, so can we bring that into the master plan? I don't know, no, for land use?
Again, what they're suggesting is it's, because they are so numerous, and some of them are so small, that it would be difficult to quantify, and in doing so, it would need to fulfill a purpose of the master plan.
Right.
And at this point, it, the easements that are shown, I think tie either directly to the land use or the public facilities element of the master plan. And to indicate where all of the individual conservation easements are, I don't think it has a direct enough nexus to any of the enumerated elements of the plan. And for anyone interested in seeing what that coverage looks like, you can go to the digital resource map. You can see them on the tax maps.
Okay.
So I hear what you're saying, I think it's a great comment, by the way, because we are, we should be, and we are proud of the conservation easement work we do in through the development process, right?
Right.
It is an unsung hero of our natural resource management, our stewardship in this town.
Right.
To that extent, it's, for the purpose of this master plan revision, I'm going to recommend it remain an unsung hero.
Okay.
And, but we appreciate the comment.
Okay, fair enough.
I misunderstood, I thought that it didn't exist at all, he wanted to create it, I had no idea it already existed.
The tax maps are on our website, so you-
Got it, understood.
You know, go through a hundred of them.
Yeah, that's good, that's, it just seemed relevant.
I would also point out and figure, we have a open space conservation map. Look at the maps.
Right.
They're quite, quite elaborate.
Yes, yeah, they are.
I've been in the development business, I'm retired, but forty-five years.
Okay.
This is quite impressive, what we have.
Oh, it is, it's-
Just, this tells you the open space, you have a conservation area that shows you all the wetlands, that has been all inventoried.
That is amazing, I was-
So you have quite, quite the, quite the data that you wouldn't have in most towns.
Yeah, oh, and I was very impressed by the level of detail, and-
You should be.
Just by diving into that detail.
We've got the top guys here.
Yes, yeah, I love it, yeah, it's tremendous amount of work, and, yeah, I'm proud to live here and have that data to support us.
Glad you're impressed.
Yes, let my voice mean anything, but yeah, it's a, that was just one piece that I saw missing. So the last, another piece, going to the Elder Cottage, housing opportunities, would the board be open to adding that into the master plan, and having that be a part of?
You're saying, you're, wants the board to recommend to the governing body that they amend the ordinance to allow ECO units?
Correct.
Again, isn't that the Township Committee starting point where we're gonna-
So we don't recommend?
I mean, we kinda did the same thing with-
The ECO technically is an affordable housing technique. I don't want to put the speaker on the spot, but I'm wondering if he's aware of the fact that the ordinance is somewhat permissive, because you can have an apartment that's been a single-family dwelling in to create living space for a family member as a conditional use in Bernard's Township ordinance. So it's-
No, but he's talking about a separate unit.
Yes, he is.
Are you aware of the fact that-
Yes.
Accessory apartments are a conditional use in the township right now?
You know that, but you think that these should be added as an adjunct-
Correct.
-to a single-family detached dwelling.
So, do you, do you, as I described it, and I mentioned to you that they are to be moved from place to place,
is that your understanding of how they're used as well?
Yes, yeah, it just sounded like an advantage to the town to allow the town to hit that, that goal without having to do more development. I'm sure there's, I don't know, fifty to a hundred homes in the town that have aging populations, I would love to be on premise.
Okay, let me say just another word about that. And that is that there are two components of the affordable housing obligation, one of which is a new construction obligation, and the other one is a rehabilitation obligation. Under the last round, and I don't have the numbers right on the top of my head, but under the last round, municipality was assigned, oh, and the ECO unit addresses the rehabilitation obligation.
Got it, okay.
Not the new construction obligation, where all the new units are coming from.
Understood.
All right?
Okay.
So when the township got its affordable housing obligation, and saw the size of its rehabilitation obligation, it questioned it, and under the affordable housing regulations, you can actually conduct a community survey to see if that number's actually accurate.
Understood.
And I think we had over a two-thirds reduction in the rehabilitation obligation, simply because we didn't have housing stock that needed rehabilitation.
Understood.
In any kind of measurable form. So I just want you to get that-
So there isn't a burden there, on the town?
Right, so that rehab obligation was knocked down, but the ECO unit really only plays into that easy-
It only gets credited to the rehab, it doesn't get credited to the new construction obligation.
Right.
So it will not do what you think-
Well, you may have thought it would do, but it's still a good idea, I mean, I'm not suggesting you're- That's a bad idea, just wanted you to understand how it kind of fits into the affordable housing.
Yeah, I mean, on my side, it's just I have my mother-in-law, and I'd rather she be in an ECO unit than in her house, so that's, to get to the root of it, to get to-
I'll remind you, you're on the record.
Oh, thank you, sorry, just-
I was just gonna say, you didn't have to say that yourself.
Sorry, sorry. I hope not, no. She's, she's taking care of the kids, she's great. So seven, last, last two, yeah, I support Bill's suggestion from earlier. I think the lake here would be a tremendous asset to the town. I have two young kids, we'd love to go swimming, fishing.
Water is another amenity.
Yes, yeah, so I'd recommend adding it to the master plan, but with that condition. I know it's late, but I think it would just, I think the town residents, I don't know, it's up to you guys. But that would be my recommendation. Do we know, what is the contaminants? I mean, Bill said they're not a big deal.
Oh.
Oh, no.
No, no.
Bill said it wasn't a big deal. I believe that they wouldn't, DEP wouldn't have said three feet of shale on top, it wasn't a big deal.
Got it, understood. All right, and I love my colleagues' plans to update the master plan, to recommend that no warehouses or manufacturing be allowed. I think that's, I don't know what manufacturing currently takes place, but if we don't have significant manufacturing, it seems like, from what I'm hearing in the town, the general consensus of the residents is that we don't need warehouses or manufacturing here. It's a residential community, people come here to raise their families and to send their kids to good schools, and to have a community where they have open spaces and hopefully uncontaminated ponds to swim in. So I think that would be a great recommendation, as if the planning board just said, you know what, we don't, we don't need warehouses, we don't have to take, take that bait. As far as I know, we, we're in a fairly good financial situation. I feel like we don't need an Amazon warehouse to keep the town afloat, so why, why open that door? And that's it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other people who'd like to come up and speak?
One other person in the room that hasn't spoken.
Mr. Edelstein, Mr. Edelstein. Okay, we're gonna wait till Kathleen comes in.
Let's get you sworn in.
Sworn in, Mr. Edelstein.
You swear or affirm testimony you're about to give in this matter, will be the truth to hold to nothing but the truth?
Yes.
You want to take a five-minute recess?
Yeah, let's take a five-minute-
Want the name and address, or?
Yeah, let's get that before we take a break.
Todd Edelstein, one seven-two Riverside Drive.
Yeah.
Recession?
Yes, recess, five minutes.
Do we have to vote on the rest?
Okay, we're back from the recess. Mr. Edelstein, you've been sworn in, and give me your name and address, go ahead, please.
Okay. I'm into one or two of these meetings in the last-
Yeah, connoisseur.
I kinda, you know, if people don't really realize, this master plan thing is actually going on since, before COVID, if I remember correctly. So it's been going on for many years, and it's been in the papers, it's been, so, tonight, it shouldn't be a surprise, this was going to come to an end eventually.
I think it came as a surprise to the board.
Or, or wishful thinking, anyway. If people don't really, you never see it, this is a copy of the last master plan, this is what it looks like. The new one will look similar, and it's gonna have-
Here's a copy of the new one.
Right, I already have one, thank you. And the master plan is really, it's a roadmap for the town. It gives guidance and a direction of how we want to run the town. And it's not really make ordinances and stuff, or recommendations necessarily. When we talk about one fifty Allen Road, just let people know, it's only an application, it's already an application. You could, you could do whatever you want and say no more warehouses, or no light manufacturing, but since it's already been presented and it's going to case, it has no bearing on one fifty Allen Road. So it's, you shouldn't be upset about it, it's how it works. I, myself, think light manufacturing is important. I think it's important not only to the town, but the country. And being that I come from a family that had light manufacturing, I, you know, it's something that we should have. Warehousing, on the other hand, I'm not all that crazy about. And if one fifty Allen Road becomes that, I'll be upset with myself, but I'll only have myself to blame. But I think, hopefully, it's going to be light manufacturing, which I support. The quarry, I really, that lake scares me. I don't want the town to have any responsibility to that lake. It, you know, it's stagnant, you know, it's just gonna get run off, you know, it's not a running stream, so it'll be stagnant. And you always hear about people drowning in quarry lakes. They jump in, and at a certain level, it becomes ice cold, no oxygen, and people just drown. It happens in Round Valley, it happens up in Varnen, and it would be an albatross around our neck for the town to own it and have to maintain it, and it's only going to have to pay for it. And I do not want to pay for it. If, you know, the people who bought that property, they're gonna be responsible for it, one way or the other, so I don't think we should be involved in that. I just would like to say that, from what I looked at the, the new master plan that's coming up, and I know a lot of work's been done on it, and I don't, anything that we missed, like I saw some of the maps, that didn't make sense, like Lord Strolling Road, on one map is red, it shows it as a commercial property, then another map shows it as white residential. then another map shows it as white residential. But that's something for, in ten years, we could fix that in ten years. But other than that, I think the board has worked their butts off, and Mr. Banish, Mr. Schly, they've also put a lot of time into this, and I don't think anybody who's sitting up here just ran through it. I mean, just even to say, well, you missed a period and a comma, kind of dragged the place out, but I mean, you all went through it, you took the time to do it, and if anything's missing, we go add it on. Anything, or the changes, will have to be through the town committee, and that means people have to go to the meetings and actually get up and ask the town committee, you know, for things. And you just can't, you know, come up at the last second and say, well, you know, what about this? You know, it takes time, government runs slow, and we all know, this master plan took years. Any type of ordinance, you know, comes up one day, it's gonna, the quickest would be two weeks, where you have it brought up for a reading, and then it gets a public hearing at the next meeting. So nothing's quick, government's slow, and people need to know that. But I think you guys did a good job, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I just say something, Mr. Edelman? I, I personally very much appreciate that you've attended every meeting for the past two-plus years. I think you're the only member of the public who has that honor, and I just personally so appreciate that you have shown such a dedication and commitment to staying informed, I truly appreciate it. Here, here.
We all do, Mr. Edelstein. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public portion. The next item is, would be a, unless there's board discussion, would be a motion to approve the draft master plan. Are there any board discussion prior to that, or any comments from professionals?
So, I, I have a couple of comments.
Go ahead.
I just think, you know, we spent a lot of time on this document, and we've had some great comments from the public, and I disagree with Mr. Edelstein with regards to people showing up at the last minute, because the planning board meetings typically aren't very exciting, and thank God we have Todd to show up, he's the only one. So he, he is an amazingly dedicated citizen of this town, I think he even goes to all the township committee meetings. I've been to those too, and they're, they're also not very exciting. But people do show up when there's an issue or when they want to be heard, so I appreciate the comments with regards to the warehouse, because the warehouse is, it is a big issue, not just in our town, but across the state. You'll see signs in different towns if you drive through, when I go down the shore, or to visit my parents in South Jersey, I'll, to avoid the Parkway, I'll go through, take the turnpike to exit 7A, 195 to 539, and you drive through, I believe it's Robbinsville, and, and it's a teeny tiny quaint little town, and they have a big problem with warehousing as well. Which brings up two other issues, and I'm, I don't want to go on too long, I'm looking like Mr. Allen, but I did actually hear on the radio yesterday that I believe that the New Jersey Legislature was considering providing funding to towns so they can take a look at their ordinances with regards to warehousing. So it, it, it's a big issue in the state. And one other thing that I thought was sort of funny, I was driving behind a truck on Route 80, and the trucker had a bumper sticker that said, "If you don't like trucks, stop buying stuff." And it, it didn't say "stuff," it was the other four-letter word, and, but I won't say that, because my wife might be watching. With regards to the warehouse in town, I think, it, I think the master plan, well, I think it's a great place to address warehousing in the master plan, because we are the planning board, and if we don't want warehousing in town, it should, we should consider whether or not to include it in, in the master plan. Now, having said that, the application is already in front of the zoning board, and I don't know that this is the right time to, to, to put it, to address it. And it would also require, you know, some further discussion, and I don't know what we would even say, because according to Mr. Banish, it is not a permitted use, and therefore by default, it's not a permitted use, and it's going to require a variance, is that fairly?
Yeah, I, I, I think, two things to your point, I don't know if you're asking, asking me a question, or two things to your point. One is, if timing is an issue for you or the board, you can amend the master plan at any time.
Okay.
However, I think going beyond that simple comment that I made, that anything that is not specifically enumerated as a permitted use is a prohibited use, I think that you can certainly create some policy and some policy discussion about the need to prohibit that use in particular by singling out certain aspects of the use and community impacts that you may find undesirable, and that could turn out to be useful to the zoning board of adjustment when it is confronted in the future with an application, because part of the test for proving a use variance is to, is to reconcile the omission of the use as a permitted use with the master plan. And so to the extent that the master plan includes a discussion about it, it could prove to be helpful in the future.
Okay, so it sounds like it's not something we want to address immediately, but we should maybe consider an amendment to the master plan, because it is such a big issue. And it's going to continue to be an issue.
You're saying you should take it under advisement for future action.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree, I think it is a subject, it, it, it would, given the tendency of the application before the zoning board of adjustment, you know, I, I agree with Paul, now is probably, now is not the time, in my opinion, as a member of this board, to, to, to go any further than the guidance provided in the current master plan, right? It's, it's been our, our policy and the result in our master plan has never, hasn't been to date to specifically require any use in town or prohibit any use in town. It is a, it is a guidance document, a policy document. Warehousing is not an enumerated use in town, therefore it is by default prohibited, right? The only way you can get a warehouse in this town is to seek relief. You have to be permitted to do something that you're otherwise not allowed to do, and I think the concern of the public over the application, and that's before the ZBA, is that the relief requested is making something appear to be.
Something other than.
Something other than light manufacturing inside the zone, right? And, and that's a quasi-judicial body that is providing process to an applicant and giving, I think, ample and adequate opportunity for the public to respond to it in that forum, right? And so I think 150 Allen Road is best adjudicated in front of the zoning board of adjustment, and I encourage everyone to continue to remain engaged in that process, right? I think the comments tonight were absolutely outstanding, especially when we get stumped on a definition. What does it look like, what does it feel like, how should it act, how should it be? In that regard, I think that's an extremely valuable comment, but I, I, I believe that, you know, the bulk requirements that are in our existing zoning ordinances should, can adequately and do adequately control the size, the capacity of the buildings that we build, and the uses permitted in the zones, control those, I, I think, in accordance with what the township committee wants as it stands today. And so I, I don't recommend we take up warehousing in this update of the master plan. I think it, it, it's something we could look at in, in the future. With regard to the quarry plan, I, I want to echo what Mr. Edelstein said, you know, I certainly am reluctant to recommend a pickup of the lake in the center of it or any of the recreation opportunities that would be created there. I think, having gone through the master plan update and looked at our survey of active and passive recreation opportunities in town in the public facilities element of the master plan, I'm not sure that the, the cost benefit would be there for us to, to do something in the quarry property, and certainly, you know, when we're all feeling the pinch of inflation, everybody is watching the dollar, you know, to, to, to look to increase the, the township's obligation for, you know, maintenance, insurance, you know, capital improvements that would be required there, it's just not someplace that I'm ready to go at, at this time. So I appreciate the presentation, it was very interesting, but I think the quarry is adequately zoned. I support the way it stands today, and I think our land use plan element adequately covers it. So I don't recommend we do anything with regard to the quarry at this time in the master plan.
Thank you.
I would also agree with that, I mean, the, you know, the master plan, I mean, it's clear that the land use element in particular, you know, whether it's residential or the non-residential uses, there, there's no change in the zoning or the intensity of the zoning, and I think that has been an outgrowth of discussions over the past couple of years now. That said, I, I really do appreciate everybody who has come out tonight, as well as the certain individual who's come out to a number of the meetings over the past several years. You know, to, to, to echo my, my colleagues, you know, I would say that, you know, I, personally, I empathize with, you know, the, the current application, or, or how about this, let me empathize with the residents who oppose the current application before the zoning board meeting, and certainly appreciate the fact that, you know, you're continuing to raise those concerns, because if not for you, who, right? If not now, when? So absolutely appreciate the fact that you guys are, are here even tonight. You know, echoing Mr. Bowman's comments regarding the quarry, I think continuing the perspective that we have, the two-acre zoning, I think is prudent, and certainly thoughtful and first when it was established, and I think prudent and thoughtful to this day, and, and look forward to continuing to support that. So, you know, for me, I'm, I'm gonna be supporting the, the, the master plan as it stands in its draft form currently, and that said, certainly welcome the opportunity in 2024 or in 2025 to consider, you know, amendments to the master plan, given the fact that we do have an existing application before the zoning board that is, that is somewhat relevant to the points made tonight. So thank you.
Are there any other comments? Mr. Crane?
I agree with what my colleagues have said here at the board. I'd also like to shout out for District Six member, Bill Allen. This is my third master plan, I've spent over an hour on the two, hour each on the 2003 and 2010 plan. Was very involved, this is the first time on this side. I was thinking this is probably my last master plan, but seeing Mr. Allen came out tonight, he might give me help for actually being there for the next 10-year master plan, so. I thank, thank you for the public for coming out, and there was a tremendous amount of work that was involved in there. We spent weeks, I spent days personally going through, line by line, item, with Mr. Banish's pain, I'm sure he's gonna tell me. As a professional, I was.
At least your honesty.
Yeah, as a, as a professional, the other professionals said, who's, who's, who's reviewing the plans? And when they heard me, they just weren't happy usually, but I usually kept them out of trouble. But with that said, I'm gonna support the, with no changes, the master plan tonight.
Are there any other comments?
I have one comment. We were very fortunate as a board to have the leadership of Kippy, our chair. Ten years on the board?
Ten years, six years as chair.
Six years as chair, so she kept us steadfast on doing our edits and reviewing and getting documents done in a timely manner. It has been a very heavy lift, and one that we couldn't have done without Kippy, so.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Kippy.
I would like to resign from the planning board at the end of 2023 for members of the public. So that's why the comments are here, thank you very much, Kippy. Are there any other comments? I guess I'll take a motion. Oh, sorry.
Nick's got one.
Mr. Cuso.
Just, just quickly, I'd also like to thank my colleagues in the planning board for an exceptional experience this past year, both in terms of the civility of discourse and what we've been able to accomplish, and thank you Chairwoman Pidichi as well for your leadership.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cuso.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the master plan as currently drafted, because it guides the use of lands within the municipality in a manner which protects public health and safety, it promotes the general welfare, and because it provides for the municipality's housing obligations and elements in a way that is designed to achieve the goal of access to affordable housing to meet present and prospective housing needs, and with particular attention to low and moderate income housing.
Thank you very much.
And I would like to second that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Miss. I'm sorry, the second. So with that, we will have a vote. Ms. Kiefer. Kimmy Min-Bowman.
Yes.
Mr. Crane.
Yes.
Mr. Demersian.
Yes.
Mr. Eorio.
Yes.
Ms. Manduk.
Yes.
Ms. Master Angelo.
Yes.
Mr. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Cuso.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we've adopted the master plan.
Thank you.
I will do a memorializing resolution for the next meeting, it's gonna be very short, it's gonna basically parrot exactly what was said with the motion. Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is comments from members. Are there any comments from members? I'd like to make a couple of comments. I thought this meeting would be my last one, but there may be another one on Verizon, it's December 19th, and I'm not gonna know until next Wednesday morning. I want to thank the board members and professionals and staff for making my 10 years as member and Chairwoman a rewarding experience. It's been 10 years as a member and six years as chair, in fact, prior to that, I think I was on the zoning board of adjustment for about two years, and then I was on the zoning board of adjustment in Randolph Township in the early 1980s. So I've had quite a long land use experience. We had good karma, I, I, it was time for me to pass the gavel to new leaders. We had good karma as a board, we respected each other's opinions, any disagreements were discussed in a professional manner. I will always remember when we first met in person after COVID restrictions were lifted, and we were so happy to interact in person, that I had to use the gavel to end the social hour and begin the meeting. So I leave the board in good hands, and thanks to you all. Any other comments from members?
I, I have just a quick comment, so the, the soda and the don't, and the, and the coffee, the chips, that's not typical for our people. This is our Christmas party.
Seasonal holiday.
What's that?
Holiday.
Our seasonal holiday. By all means, help yourself to a soda, and it's a little late, I'm sorry, but I just want you to know, we don't get these perks every week.
I was gonna ask for a raise.
If we did, the public would come more often.
And any comments from staff?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
And Mr. Banish, thank you for your patience with all of our edits.
Well, I, I don't know about that, I, I think I have to, I do have a comment, and I have to thank the board, actually, for your patience with me, and for all of your assistance and diligence and your review work and your comments. I think it made it a, a much better master plan, thank you very much.
Okay, with that, we will, we'll be going, I will read a resolution for executive session. Whereas NJSA 10 Cola 4-12, the Open Public Meetings Act, authorizes this board to exclude the public from their portion of a meeting at which this board discusses certain matters. Whereas the board is about to discuss such matters, specifically matters involving the employment and terms and condition of employment of professionals appointed by the board, whereas this board believes the public should be excluded from these discussions. Now therefore be resolved by the Burner's Township Planning Board on December 5th, 2023, that the board now go into closed session and the public be excluded, and that the board believes that the discussions conducted in the closed session should be disclosed to the public after the board takes formal action, when it returns to open session, and the minutes of the open session should include the matters discussed in closed session. The book, and so I need a motion now to please go into executive session for the resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? We're in executive session. Okay, I'd like to have a motion to come out of the, uh, closed session, please.
I'll make that motion to come out of closed session.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, then I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I defer.
All in favor?